Good evening and welcome to the 1,193rd Public Hearing and Regular Meeting of the Livonia City Planning Commission. I wish to inform all interested persons in our audience that for petitions on tonight's agenda, which involve a question of zoning, the Planning Commission will make a recommendation to City Council, and the City Council, after holding their own public hearing, will make the final determination as to whether a petition is approved or denied. Planning Commission will hold the only public hearing on request for preliminary plat's and/or vacating petitions. Commission's recommendation is forwarded to City Council for the final determination as to whether the petition is accepted or rejected. If a petition is requesting a waiver of use or a site plan and is denied tonight, the petitioner will have 10 days in which to appeal the decision in writing to City Council. Resolutions adopted by the City Planning Commission will become effective seven days after the date of adoption. Planning Commission and professional staff have reviewed each of these petitions upon their filing. The staff has furnished the Commission with both approving and denying resolutions, which the Commission may or may not use depending on the outcome of the proceedings tonight. If our secretary is ready, please call the roll.
Mrs. Smiley.
Present.
Mr. Banjero, no, Mr. Long?
Present.
Tenaro is absent, Ventura is absent, Karen Magno is here, Chair Molschow.
Is here. And also tonight we have Mark Toramina and Stephanie Reese from our Planning Department. Because we only have one item on our agenda, I won't go through the full speech, but what we'll do is present the item. Our Planning Staff will give background information on it, and then we'll have our petitioner come forward to speak to the item, and then we'll make our decision. With that, we will start with item number one on the public hearing, section of our agenda.
Petition 2022-10-02-20 submitted by the Manic and Smith Group, Inc., requesting waiver use approval pursuant to Section 6.07 of the Livonia Vision 21 zoning ordinance as amended in connection with proposal to redevelop the site, including demolishing the existing commercial building and constructing a new automated auto wash facility called Clean Express at 20330 and 20340 Farmington Road, located on the east side of Farmington Road between Norfolk and Eight Mile Road in the northwest quarter of Section 3.
Thank you, Mr. Secretary. Mr. Toramina?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Again, this is a request to construct a new automated car wash facility. This site is on the east side of Farmington Road, it's just south of Eight Mile Road. It's the site of the former Napa Auto Parts Store. The zoning is C2 general business. The site is made up of two parcels with 166 feet of frontage on Farmington Road and a combined area of developable land of one acre. There's an existing 5,400 square foot building on the property. It's located near the middle of the site, that would be removed. Access, as you can see from this aerial photograph, is currently provided by two driveways on Farmington Road, one on the north side of the site and then the other on the south side. Approval was granted in 1979 for the existing auto parts store. Napa has moved to a new location and the building is now vacant. To the north of the site is our commercial businesses that front along Farmington Road, Zone C2 general business. Immediately to the south is the Bad Brad's BBQ, former G Subu's Leather Bottle Restaurant, also Zone C2. And then lying to the east is a parking lot for the business to the north of this site. The zoning of that is C2 and P parking, and then some undeveloped area of land, which is also Zone C2, as well as N2, which is residential. As you extend further to the east, there are single-family homes as part of an N2 zone district, and then west across Farmington Road, our commercial properties, Zone C1. The proposed site plan shows a new car wash building that would measure 32 feet by 123 feet in overall dimensions, totaling 3,677 square feet. The building, as you can see from this plan, is positioned along the north side of the property. The existing two drive approaches on Farmington Road would remain. The south approach would accommodate two-way traffic for both ingress and egress to the site, and then the north driveway would be used only for vehicles exiting the car wash facility. So it would be one way. Cars would queue in two lanes, which are located along the south side of the property. We estimate that each lane could accommodate stacking for approximately nine cars. At the east end, there would be two pay kiosks, one for each service lane. The automated, there would be automated gates that would control vehicle access. The kiosk would have digital menu boards, as well as self-serve pay devices, and would be covered by overhead, non-illuminated structural canopies. Just ahead of the entrance to the facility, the two lanes, as you can see, taper to form a single lane, and then there is a 12-foot wide escape lane that would be provided before entering the building. Parking with vacuum equipment would be available in the area between the building and the service lanes. As vehicles exit the facility at the west end, there would be an option of either going straight and exiting the site by turning onto Farmington Road, or vehicles could then turn left along a short drive aisle that loops back to access either a 21-car parking lot with vacuum service or continue south to the drive aisle where the two-way approach and the service lanes are located. The building would be set back 46 feet from the future right-of-way of Farmington Road. From the east property line, the proposed building is set back 88 feet. And for the side yards, the ordinance requires a minimum building setback of 35 feet on one side of the property and a minimum requirement of eight feet on the other side. In this case, along the south side, the building would be set back 124 feet, and on the north side, the setback as shown is 11 feet. So the proposed building placement complies with all yard regulations. Looking at the floor plan, this is it. You'll see that the north half of the building would be occupied by the car wash bay, and then the south half would contain the mechanical systems, a bathroom, as well as an office. The zoning ordinance requires a total of 21, 20 parking spaces, and the plans show 21 spaces within the parking lot on the south side of the building. As I mentioned previously, each one of these parking spaces would have a self-serve vacuum station that would consist of a built-in waste receptacle, aluminum vacuum hose, as well as vacuum tools. Looking at the building itself, and I'll go to the renderings here because they're probably a lot easier to understand. The materials would be composed of a combination of panel brick, or what is referred to as quick brick, and Nihichi, I always have problems with this, Nichaha fiber cement siding. I think the petitioner has samples of both of these materials. The exterior, as you can see, would be in three different colors. The brown is actually the cement fiber siding, and then the white and the gray colors on the building would be the brick. Windows, as you can see too, would be installed on both sides of the building. The heights of the structure would be 22 feet 4 inches overall. There is a dumpster shown on the site. That dumpster is located in the southeast corner of the parking lot. It would be fully enclosed, it's located here. It would be fully enclosed with, on three sides, with enclosure walls, and then with a gate on the, on the front side of it. The walls shown are seven feet 4 inches in height, and would be constructed of the same quick brick material that would be used in the construction of the building. We do not have details for stormwater management. It's presumed that this would be accomplished underground. However, we're not aware of the location of those facility. In terms of landscaping, moving to landscape plan, the ordinance requires four full-size trees, two ornamental trees and 26 shrubs along Farmington Road. The plan shows four full-size trees, two ornamental shrubs, and then 30, or two ornamental trees and then 32 shrubs. So it does comply with the landscape requirements along Farmington Road. Additionally, green belts are required along the sides and the rear of the property. In this case, the green belts shown measure 17 width along the south side of the property, 11 feet on the north side, and between 11 and 25 feet along the rear of the property. All three of these areas would contain full-size trees that would be planted in rows, and as requested, plants have been added to the north and rear green belts, but not along the south side. In terms of site lighting, the submitted photometric plan, we'll move to that diagram. Details, information on site lighting, including the location and type of the light sources and illumination levels. The mounting height of the lights would be 20 feet above finish grade. This is the maximum that the ordinance requires. The lights on the building would be in a form of wall pack, so those would be arranged nine feet above the finish grade. The proposed average illumination levels exceed the zoning ordinance and should be reduced. Also, the lights should be lowered at night after the business hours. Terms of signage, the building would be allowed one 32-square-foot wall sign along the front of the building and one 30-square-foot ground sign. The plans show two signs on the south side of the building and one on the front elevation. The one on the front is 20 square feet, so that would comply with the requirement for overall signage. However, the two signs shown on the south side of the building, one 52 square feet and the other 17 and a half square feet, those would be in excess and would require approval by the Zoning Board of Appeals. The monument sign appears to conform with the size requirements. However, the location of the sign is not shown on the plan, and it will require a minimum 10-foot setback from the right-of-way, the future planned right-of-way of Farmington Road. There is a special requirement under Section 6.07 of the ordinance that any proposed auto wash establishment be at least 150 feet from any church, public or parochial school or playground, and there are no schools or playgrounds or churches within 150 feet of the subject site. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I'll be happy to read out the correspondence on this item.
Yes, please.
Our first letter is from the Engineering Division dated October 19th, and it reads, "In accordance with your request, the Engineering Division has reviewed the above referenced petition. We have no objections to the proposed waiver use at this time. The subject parcels are assigned the addresses of 20330 and 20340 Farmington Road. The legal description provided with the drawings does not match the legal descriptions on file with the assessor's office. Most notably, the southerly parcel does not exclude the west 60 feet of the property for Farmington Road right-of-way as the assessor's description does. We would like to request that, should the project receive approval and proceed forward, that the owner consolidate the parcels and provide a new overall description for the resultant parcel. The existing parcel is currently serviced by public water main, sanitary sewer, but there is no information on the proposed alterations to these services, so we cannot comment on impacts to the existing systems at this time. Should the service leads need to be revised, the owner will need to submit drawings to this department to determine if permits will be required. Most likely, the water service will need to be upgraded for the proposed use of the property, which would require disturbing the Farmington Road pavement to access the existing main. We are unable to comment on stormwater or storm sewer and detention needs at this time as we do not have detailed utility information to determine if the site already has storm sewer in place or not. The engineers for the project have been in contact with this department and are aware of the requirements, but are still in process of preparing detailed drawings for review." That should be noted that any work within the five-mile, excuse me, the Farmington Road right-of-way will require the owner to obtain permits with the Wayne County Department of Public Services. And that letter is signed by David Lear, Assistant City Engineer. Next is a letter coming from the Department of Public Safety, Livonia Fire and Rescue, dated October 31st, indicating that they have no objections to the proposal with the following stipulation. "Access around buildings shall be provided for emergency vehicles with a minimum vertical clearance of 13 feet 6 inches, a turning radius of 53 feet wall-to-wall, and an inside turning radius of 29 feet 6 inches." This stipulation is referring to fire suppression operations. A further detailed plan review will take place when this division receives an official plan set." And that letter is signed by Brian Cookla, Fire Marshal for the city. Next is a letter of no objection coming from the Division of Police Public Safety, dated October 19th, and signed by Scott Chapansky, Sergeant of the Traffic Bureau. A letter from the Inspection Department dated November 1st that reads, "A variance from the Zoning Board of Appeals will be required for excess signage. Proposed separate permits are required for all signs. This department has no further objections to this petition." That letter is signed by Jerome Hannah, Director of Inspection. Letter of no objection from the Department of Finance dated October 25th, and signed by Connie Campula, Chief Accountant. A letter of no objection coming from the Office of the Treasurer dated October 19th, and signed by Linda Schiel, Treasurer of the City of Livonia. And a letter from the Office of the, oh, excuse me, the Assessment Department that reads, "The Manic and Smith Group are requesting approval plans for the redevelopment of 20330 and 20340 Farmington Road. These plans include the demolition of the existing commercial building and reconstruction of a new car wash facility. Address 20340 Farmington is parcel 01001007001, and address 20330 Farmington is parcel 01099002000. Based on the site plan documents, it is necessary for these parcels to be combined. Please direct any questions to the assessor's office or livonia.gov for the lot combination process." And that letter is signed by Kathy Siderlet, Residential Appraiser. And then lastly, we have an email correspondence from a resident who gives her name as Iwa Kudzurska. And the email reads, "Unfortunately, I cannot attend the public hearing on Tuesday, November 15th in person, and am writing instead. I am in opposition to petition 2022-10-20 as the area where the Manic Group wishes to construct an automated auto wash facility is currently surrounded by professional and retail buildings, as well as smart, a smart new restaurant. I believe a car wash is not in keeping with this part of Farmington Road. There is already a car wash not a mile away at Nine Mile and Farmington. Granted, this is not Livonia. Thank you." Again, this is from Iwa Kudzurski, who gives her address as 20310 Mayfield, Livonia, 48152. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Toramina. Is there any questions for our Planning Staff? If not, our petitioner is in the audience. You're welcome to come up to one of our podiums so our vast audience can hear you and make your presentation. We'll ask that you start with your name and address for our record.
Sure. Kyle Rettmore with Manic and Smith, 1160 Dublin Road, Columbus, Ohio.
Okay, thank you. And what would you like to tell us about your proposal?
So, as you guys can see, not a lot has changed from the site plan perspective from last meeting, from the study session. I know some of the main updates we had were landscape as far as the site plan. Mark noted that there was, sounded like some additional screening on the south that was not added, that may have been requested. We can certainly fill in additional shrubs in between those mature trees as well. Main questions from last meeting that came up were related to some of the building material, as well as screening for the rooftop units. Starting with the building material, the quick brick was a question. We've, we've learned a little bit about what quick brick is the last couple of weeks. So this is actually a structural concrete brick system that's, so traditional brick, obviously, where there's rebar requirements, things like that throughout. This acts as the structural wall as well as the finish. So I think there was confusion on if there was like a fake brick kind of put on, on the face of the building, which is not the case. So you can see a couple, a couple of different samples we have as far as color and what that entails. And then the sample for the, I'm just gonna say fake wood facade that you can see in some of the renderings, that's attached with just two, you know, the two-by-fours behind it and mounted on. There is some details in the packet regarding the parapet and how that, those, those details are, you know, shown, obviously, in that rendering you have right there as well. So that's the, that's the only rooftop units we have as far as mechanical equipment that is screened. So I believe that addresses a couple of those questions. There was, I think, from an operations standpoint, I don't believe there was any outstanding items we, we discussed last meeting. To some of the comments that staff had, we do plan to consolidate the lots and comply with that. As far as signage, I think based on the recommendation, recommendation of this body will likely just adhere to the zoning code and not request a variance for that. That just has to work out with, you know, the final architectural drawings and details there. So we, again, we plan to adhere to the zoning code for the building signage and the monument sign as well in that placement. I'm trying to think, what else? Mark mentioned storm sewer and utilities. That will come during the final engineering review, coordinating with that office. Likely, likely we'll try to, you know, reuse the sanitary service, depending on the depth and the, and the condition of that water as well and size, but it, again, it all depends on the condition. It's an old, it's an old site and, and the depth there. Storm sewer will be handled, detention and water quality will be handled underground with approval from the Engineering Department on that system. I think that's all I have. Do you have anything to add, Dennis? Okay. And happy to answer, try to answer any other questions you guys might have.
Well, thank you, Mr. Rettmore. That's an excellent presentation. I think you hit most of the bullet points that I had on my notes as far as things that we wanted to make sure that you followed up on. So I'll go to my fellow commissioners and see if there's any questions for you. Smiley?
Just one quick one, thank you, Mr. Chair. There's a car wash at Nine and Gill, and now there's another one. I didn't realize there was also one at Nine and Farmington, but you said you kind of did a study and there's enough, I mean...
Can we ask you to come up so our, there we are, TV audience can hear you as well?
All right. Dennis Miller, address is 4200 Big Beaver, Suite 300 Troy, Michigan. I'm a consultant for the, for the car wash.
Thank you.
We talked about the one at, at Eight Mile and Gill, right? And I didn't know, Nine Mile and Farmington, I didn't know the one that was up there, but that's Farmington Hills, or Farmington, I guess, or Farmington Hills. So there's, there's plenty of room. Because we talked last time, I think the closest wash in Livonia is three or four miles away. So there's, there's a lot of room for, for a car wash with the population too. You know, I think the Three Mile, 65,000 people in that, in that trade area. So there's a lot of, lot of room for car washes, for sure.
Okay. And then my other, do you have no kind of a awning or cover over where the vacuum cleaners are, do you?
No, ma'am, no.
Probably not getting a car washed.
Right.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Smiley. Any other questions for our petitioner?
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Kimagno?
I got a question from Mark. Mark, did you say that you thought the lighting was excessive?
Yeah, I checked the, looked at the photometric plan that was provided and then compared that to our lighting standards. And I apologize, this was not discussed at the study meeting, but the maximum average illumination level for parking lot areas as recommended in the ordinance, or as required in, in the ordinance, is one-foot candle. And as I look at this plan, it's indicated that the average overall in the parking lot is three-foot candles. So while that, while there, you know, these plans always have some variation in the illumination levels depending on the type of lights and their placement, overall, that would be too high of an average based on what the ordinance limits it to. The other, but the other issue I think we, we should address this evening is how long those lights are on. As you recall at the study meeting, it was indicated that the vacuums are available, if I understood correctly, 24 hours. And if it's the intent to keep that parking lot illuminated during, at times, at times when the business is closed, then I think that's something that we should consider, requiring those lights to be lowered or turned off after business hours and maybe even the vacuums turned off as well.
Do you, do you think the standard, what they've got listed is the three, it's, so it's three times what we would normally like to see in a parking lot? A parking lot where there's no activity other than parking your car. There could be activity here, people cleaning their cars. Do you think there's room to, to meet in the middle on something like that?
Yeah, yeah, again, we can work with, I think, their, their lighting consultant or with their engineers to make adjustments to that lighting plan. It wouldn't translate to three times the illumination level. Those, those, you know, the fact that it's, the average required is one and this is three, doesn't translate to three times the lighting. But yeah, I think there's room to work with them on that. Again, the, the other question, I think, the more important question is going to be, you know, what point those, at what time are those lights on and off during the operation?
I would think that, you know, your primary focus here is daylight hours washing cars and even, even the business hours till 8 o'clock at night. And most of the year, that works out fine. In the evening, like now, it's a couple, two or three hours of daylight, so, or nighttime. So yeah, I think there's something needs to give on that. It doesn't need to look like daylight as you drive up Farmington Road here for a car wash to light, light the whole world up there, in my opinion.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Kimagno. Any other questions?
Thank you. I just, I actually just have more of a curiosity question. I mean, so, you know, we're Michigan and we get bad weather and cold and everything like that. How, I know at the study session, you talked about how you have really good drying machines, but how do you prevent ice buildup at the exit of the car wash?
So there, the concrete pad at the exit is, I think, there's a heated, it's heated. So 20-foot, the first 20-foot is, is a heated pad.
Okay, and that was a different color on the rendering, right?
Yeah, I believe so.
Yeah, okay, so that's a, kind of like the gray part there is...
Yeah.
Okay. That makes sense. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Long. Any other questions for our petitioner from anyone? Okay, there is no one else in the audience to come forward and speak to this item. So if there is no additional questions, I'll give a little moment if anybody thinks of anything else. If there's no additional questions, then a motion would be in order.
Mr. Chair?
Mrs. Smiley?
I'm a pretty fast talker. I'll make the approving resolution that the request to construct a new automated auto wash facility, Clean Wixpress, at 20330 and 20340 Farmington Road is hereby approved subject to the City Council approval in the following conditions. That the site plan identified as C200 dated November the 10th, 2022, prepared by Manic Smith Group, is hereby approved and shall be adhered to. All parking spaces except for, except the required handicap spaces shall be double-stripped at 10 feet wide and 20 feet in length. The hours of operation shall be limited to the following Monday through Saturday, 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., and Sunday 9:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. That the landscape plan identified as L100 dated November the 10th, 2022, prepared by Manic Smith Group, is hereby approved and shall be adhered to except that the final landscape plan details shall be approved by the Planning Department. Is, is that going to cover what you said, Mark, about some more on the south side?
It doesn't address it specifically, but that was, that was our intent there is to have that modified to include additional landscape material and then require our, our final approval.
And that does that? Okay, that all disturbed lawn areas, including right-of-way, shall be sanded in lieu of hydroseeding. That underground sprinklers are to be provided for all landscaped and sanded areas, and all planted materials shall be installed to the satisfaction of the Inspection Department and thereafter permanently maintained in a healthy condition. That the elevation plan identified as A2-1 dated July the 21st of 2022, prepared by SBA Studios, is hereby approved and shall be adhered to. That the three walls of the trash dumpster area shall be constructed out of the same brick used in the construction of the building or in the event of a poured wall, a substitute, the wall's design, texture and color shall match that of the building. The enclosed gates shall be of solid panel steel construction or durable, long-lasting solid panel fiberglass. That all rooftop mechanical equipment shall be concealed from public view on all sides by screening that shall be of a compatible character material and color to other exterior materials of the building. That all light fixtures shall not exceed 20 feet in height and shall be aimed and shielded to minimize the stray light trespassing across the property lines and glaring into the adjacent roadway. Do we need to address that any further? Or are we just gonna say, and they will work with you?
Our recommendation is that the overall average illumination levels be reduced and that the lights, lighting also be reduced after hours the business closes.
Okay, and you'll just add that on there, right?
We can, we can add that language.
Okay, that only conforming signage is approved with this petition, and any additional signage shall be separately submitted for review and approval by the Zoning Board of Appeals. That no LED light band or exposed neon shall be permitted on the site, including but not limited to the building and around the windows. That unless approved by the proper local authority, any type of exterior advertising such as promotional flags... such as promotional flags, streamers, or sponsor vehicles designed to attract the attention of passing motors, shall be prohibited. That the specific plans referenced in this approving resolution shall be submitted to the inspection department at the time the building permits are applied for. And pursuant to section thirteen point thirteen of the Livonia Vision Twenty-One zoning ordinance, this approval is valid for a period of one year only, from the date of the approval by the city council. And unless the building is, permit is obtained, this approval shall be null and void at expiration of said period.
Is there support?
Support with amendments by the planning department.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to approve, made by Mrs. Smiley, supported by Mr. Long, which is based on our prepared resolution with some amendments and changes that were made along the way. Thank you, Ms. Smiley, for catching those. And if there's no discussion on the motion, a roll call is in order.
Mrs. Smiley.
Aye.
Mr. Long.
Aye.
Caremagna votes aye, Chair motion.
Votes aye, motion passes. We'll go to the city council with an approving recommendation. We should good luck with your project. Thank you for coming tonight. We appreciate the samples, bringing those in.
Get your workout in.
That's very thoughtful, but I'll, I'll take mine.
City Council watching.
Thank you. All right, with that, we now move on to the miscellaneous section of our agenda, item number two.
That is the approval of the two thousand twenty-three planning commission schedule.
All right, we were presented with a schedule for meeting dates next year. I don't know if there's any changes or corrections or additions to that schedule from anyone. I think we're all okay with it. So if that's fine, I think we can safely just receive and file that, and we will move on to item number three on our agenda.
Do we have to?
Do we, we don't have to vote formally, just receive and file is fine. Yeah, okay.
Great, thanks.
It's just the power I wield as chairman.
We all like it. It's okay, go ahead.
Number three is the approval of the minutes of the one thousand one hundred and ninety-second public hearing, a regular meeting held by the planning commission on October twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-two.
All right, and all current members that are here tonight were present at that meeting. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
By Mr. Long, supported by Mrs. Smiley. If there's no objections, I think we can safely show four to approve that. I see no objections from anybody, so we'll show four to approve that, those minutes. And that takes us to the end of our agenda. Is there any other business to come before the planning commission this evening? I see none, so a motion to adjourn would be in order. By Mrs. Smiley, supported by...
Support.
Mr. Long. I see a theme...
Trend.
Back and forth. All right, that's a motion to adjourn by Smiley and Long. If there's no objections, I think we can safely show four on that as well. I again see no objections, so we'll mark that as passed. And that takes us to the official end of our meeting, which will be at seven thirty-four PM. We wish to thank Livonia Television staff for bringing this meeting to our community, and wish them a good night to Livonia.
Have a Thanksgiving.
And happy Thanksgiving. Thank you very much, Ms. Smiley. Good night.